Microphones.
Yes, sir.
I call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Reverend Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Hood.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Mr. Mayo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Vogler.
Here.
Mr. Whittle.
Here.
I want to ask everyone to stand. We'll have an invocation by J. Lee Vogler, Jr., followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for allowing us to come here tonight and be amongst friends and constituents and fellow Danvillians as we discuss many important issues that will impact the lives of thousands of people. We're living in a time of uncertainty, but also a time of great opportunity. Lord, we ask that you guide us and bless us and help us in each opportunity that it presents itself to us. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I want to say good evening to those of you who are here tonight, those of you who are viewing by River City, and those who are viewing by Facebook. On our announcements, will Ms. Sherry Tuck and anyone that's with her, please come forward as I present a proclamation for the Crop Walk. Good evening. And it reads, whereas hunger and poverty are problems facing millions of Americans, including citizens of Danville and Pennsylvania County, and whereas the causes of hunger and poverty can be eliminated if people join together to find a solution, and whereas the Danville Crop Hunger Walk has faithfully worked to end hunger and poverty in Danville and Pennsylvania County, and has brought people from all backgrounds together to join in the fight, and whereas on October the 3rd, the 14th Annual Danville Area Crop Hunger Walk will take place as the citizens of this city work together to eliminate hunger and food insecurity in our community and in our world. And therefore, Alonzo Jones, Mayor, along with Danville City Council of the City of Danville, Virginia, do hereby proclaim Sunday, October 3rd, 2021, as a day of action against hunger and poverty in the city of Danville. Given on my hand is 21st day of September 21st, you may come forward and get your proclamation. Please feel free to give comments. And again, thank you so much for all the hard work that you do. Thank you. Please feel free to give some remarks.
Thank you, Mayor Jones, and distinguished members of City Council. On behalf of the Crop Walk Committee, I want to say thank you to the City of Danville for your continued support of the Danville Area Crop Hunger Walk. This is our 14th year, and there is so much work to be done. We will continue to walk until hunger and poverty are history. I invite everyone here tonight to join us October 3rd at Blue Park. Together, we will end hunger. Thank you again.
No, thank you all so much. Thank you so much. We are happy to have our superintendent here with us tonight, Dr. Harrison, along with members of the Danville Public School System. But there's another Dr. Harrison here, and we want to ask him and all those who want to come forward. We have a proclamation. Dr. Harrison, good evening to you, sir, and to all of our superintendent and our colleagues from the Danville Public School System. Good evening. And the proclamation reads as thus, "The Adult and Career Education Center is a program of Danville Public Schools providing educational and career opportunities to adults with low-level reading and communication skills. And whereas the need for a highly literate citizenry increases as Danville, Virginia moves towards an increasingly technological future, and whereas in the city of Danville, more than 20% of Danville, Virginia adults experience literacy issues that severely impact their lives and their families and their ability to secure and maintain gainful employment while striving to fully participate as citizens and residents of Danville, Virginia. And whereas the Adult and Career Education Center in Danville Public Schools' mission is to help adults with low-level literacy development, basic reading, and communication skills so they can fulfill their roles as positive citizens and workers. And whereas this accomplished by classroom instruction, one-to-one tutoring, adult literacy curriculum, educational resources, and community partnerships. And therefore, Alonzo Jones, Mayor of the City of Danville, along with Danville City Council, do hereby proclaim September the 19th, from September the 19th to the 25th, as National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week in the city of Danville, and want to increase public awareness about the need and the value of adult education and family literacy in order to leverage resources to support access to basic educations for the 43 million adults in the United States with low literacy skills. Forty-three million adults in the United States with low literacy skills. Given on my hand this 21st day of September 2021, please come forward and get your proclamation, and please feel free to give some remarks.
To Mayor Jones, members of the council, thank you for allowing us to be here on this evening to present this proclamation for the city of Danville. In looking at our data, as Mayor Jones has already stated, 20% of Danville citizens have low literacy skills. And when we look at the number of dropouts of people who do not have their high school diplomas, about 6,113 for the city of Danville. So we, Danville Public Schools, we are committed to do our part in making sure that we provide services and skills to citizens of Danville so they can go out and be productive members of society and gain meaningful employment.
Councilman Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say to Superintendent Harrison and to you, sir, Dr. Harrison, and to you, ma'am, that you're right on tap. When I look at the economic forefathers of our city many, many years ago, when things were set up economically to supply a labor force rather than to develop education, and to see where we have been in the past and where we are, even the health problems that we have in our community, you're right on tap, sir, in everything that you're saying. And reading is most important. I want to salute you for the initiative that you all do. And that's why it's so important that we support the one cent tax increase because this is so important for capitalization, to have everything that we need all in one package taken care of, and it's done, and we really can move forward. When we talk about a good quality of life, that deals with the whole total picture of every avenue of our community. And dealing with what we're saying now in reference to literacy and reading is the basics of retaining our youth and they can enjoy the prosperity that is here now, and the prosperity is coming. And I just want to salute everything, whatever I can do. And I'm sure that Mayor and Council support it 100%. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir.
Dr. Harrison, correct me if I'm wrong, but your numbers were astounding. 6,113. Can you reiterate that, please?
Yes, we went back and looked at the data. Roughly 6,113 citizens of Danville who do not have a high school diploma. So that makes them less marketable to employers because they don't have the skills that they need. So we're trying to do our best to make sure we equip them with some type of skill and give them the knowledge that they need so they can go out and be productive.
Dr. Miller.
Yeah, we were talking before the meeting a few years ago. There was like 14 and a half percent unemployment rate in Danville. And at that point, you just needed a labor force. And then, you know, for the mills and so forth. But now you need an educated workforce to meet the demand for the jobs that are coming now or are already here. So this is extremely important, we educate our people so they can qualify to get these jobs. Thank you.
Councilman Mayo.
Yes, sir. And good to have you here in Danville. You've got a great team right behind you there. And could you elaborate a little bit on the 20%? Is that now what we have as far as overall?
It's just the low literacy skills. When we look at the data for the city of Danville, I'm not saying that they can't read, but they don't have the necessary ability to read at a level where they could fully comprehend and attain that meaningful employment and understand the things that they're reading. So we're committed to doing what we can through our programs and services to make sure that we offer them something that they can better themselves and be, like I said, more productive citizens of society.
Dr. Harrison, I know you're very aware of this, but City Council had three strategies. And just recently, we moved education as our top number one strategy. City Manager and I were at the State of the Region this morning. This is so important. Any activities that are taking place, Ms. Cully, any activities for them? I know we declared a week, but is there any activities that the public that's watching that they can participate in, the numbers they can call? If there are persons, that's one of these 6,113 people, is there anything that they could do to get involved?
I'll tell you that this past weekend, we were at Bojangles on Highway 29 as a kickoff for our Financial Literacy Week. One thing that we're doing within Danville Public Schools is expanding out. We are setting up sites. Camp Grove, we're looking at a couple other sites.
Yes, we're looking at adult education.
Speak right into that microphone so they can hear. This is so important. It goes right along with our number one strategy.
We're expanding. Currently, we're expanding our sites, and we hope to be up and running fully with all the sites by January 2022. We're looking at adult male detention, adult female detention, city jail male, city jail women. At the Glenwood Community Center, also Cardinal Village. We're going to open up a site at our Woodrow Wilson Facility and Boys and Girls Club.
That's great news. Councilman Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all so much for being here tonight. We have always been straightforward in what we do, okay? And I realize that even tonight, we are all over the world by being on television. The 6,000 people, Danville's population is around 40,000 and change. The 6,000 people, about what age would these people be? I don't want the employer to think that we have 6,000 people in Danville who are not, I won't say qualified, but who are not capable maybe of learning these kind of skills. So is it possible, and I appreciate your candor, I appreciate your candor, is it possible to break this down as far as the 6,000 people would be, for example, 18 and over but can learn new skills? 6,000 people are eight years old? I hope not. 6,000 people are retired, 60, 70, 80 years old? Could you break it down in terms of the 6,000 people so we will know what we can do to reach that target group?
Absolutely. One of the things that we started doing was we looked back at our data for Danville Public Schools for the past five years, and we looked at all the students who dropped out without completing school. And we're in the process of reaching out to those students and also the students who left Danville Public Schools with just a certificate of completion. So in that process, we're looking at reaching out to these students to offer them, we first assess their transcripts to see what we can do to better serve them, whether they may need creative recovery or pursue a general education diploma. So we're in the process of crunching those numbers now. And like I said, we went back over a five-year period just looking at the dropouts from our high school. And then we're starting there. That's our focal point, and then we're going to narrow it down from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The amazing part about it is you're creating programs and you're creating avenues. When you talked about opening all the centers, all the things that you're doing, which is huge. And Councilman Campbell mentioned this. I see the co-chair, Kenny, will you mind standing up? I see the co-chair here, Councilman Campbell, just mentioned this. It's so important. This is so important that you vote yes for DPS. And Councilman Campbell, thank you for the, Councilman Campbell.
Yes, now, I don't know if this is pregnant, being very, this is a conflict of what you're saying, but anything that Bible Way can do in references, Dr. Harrison, we opened up our facility. I think you know that. I just want to put that in, Mr. Mayor, and to the attorney from out of order, will you please censor me?
You don't want to be censored. Is Dr. Harrison, Dr. Harrison, and anyone else have anything you want to add?
Thank you. So our numbers to answer your question, Mr. Saunders, is that the ranges of age is some young and some certainly older citizens. Citizens who are in their midlife, in their 40s. And we want to send a message that it's never too late to get that high school diploma. And we actually have a new process to give people credit for some experience, work experience on the National Diploma Service. So we feel that whether you're 60, 50, or 18, if you walked away without the diploma, we want to provide you that opportunity. So sites are expanding. We had in a previous program, someone in their mid-50s graduate. So there's always opportunity to earn that diploma and move to the next level. So that age range, to be specific, could be from 18 to someone in their early 60s. It's a community capacity number. So we look forward to expanding those services because we know that many of our, the many companies coming here, they want folks to have that diploma, and that's a body of individuals who can launch into another career if they have those diplomas. So we're going to take you up on that.
Thank you.
And expanding those services, and thank you for your opportunity, the opportunity to be here.
Anyone else? Again, thank you all so much for being here. Thank you, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Harrison, Ms. Cully. Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So update, Mr. Larson, please. Alan Larson? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mayor, Councilman, thank you. It's a pleasure and opportunity to be here. We haven't had a chance to be here for some time. 2020 was a crazy year. I'd like to give the community and the council an update on the hospital and how things are going and presented to the council members our community benefit report. I'd like to specifically recognize Councilman Vogler. I appreciated the words in your invocation. These are, in fact, challenging times, I think challenging for all of us. Hospital is no exception to those challenges. But despite all of that, a couple of significant highlights that we're proud of for 2020. We've added over 22 physicians or providers to our community, made almost $5 million in capital investments to the hospital and to the community practices that we manage and lead, almost $80 million to 1,100 employees in payroll and benefits, $27 million in uncompensated services to the community, and paid $11.7 million in taxes. So I think we've tried to do our part and provide resources to the community over the years, and 2020 was, I think, another successful year. On the back page, you can see a couple of highlights from our efforts in 2020. Despite the challenges that we had, we've had still some significant sponsorships that we provided to Big Brothers and Sisters and Boys and Girls Club and others. You can see also listed here our Board of Directors at this time. That was in 2020, so we've updated a few members since then. But I think there's, in addition to some financial and some growth numbers, there's some quality metrics that I think the community should know about. This hospital is ranked nationally by Medicare as CMS Services out of five total stars potential. We started at a very low end on that and now grown to three stars. So we're recognized by the federal government as providing good quality care to our community, which ranks similarly to other health systems in our region. There's another national agency called Leapfrog where they give a letter grade. A is the best, and we started a D. We're now at a B after a couple of years of hard work. The challenge we're facing right now is the challenge that we're all facing. I think the city has turned to advertising on roadside bulletins. I see that's a creative way. Maybe we could rent some of those and put some names, some advertising up for the hospital. But we're 40 nurses short from where we were at the beginning of this year. COVID numbers have started to decline. You see those numbers daily, I'm sure. So we're seeing that a little bit of a decline over the last couple of weeks, but it's still significant. We have 21 COVID patients in the hospital today, which is about a 20% of our census. So that's significant. Posted on Facebook recently a presentation that came from a physician out of Louisiana that I think highlights it best. Because of that 20%, that's people we can't take care of that have heart attacks or who have strokes or who have cancer. With the limited resources that we're all facing these days, the more patients who come with COVID are taking the spots of other people who could be taken care of. And so we end up with a lot of people waiting in the emergency department. We've never had patients waiting in the emergency department on a ventilator before, which is currently a regular theme. So we would plead with the community and all of its leaders to encourage vaccination. The data is pretty compelling. All of the patients who are in the ICU were not vaccinated, all the COVID patients who are currently in the ICU. Yes, we have some patients who come to the hospital who are admitted that have been vaccinated. None of them make it to the ICU. They're able to be treated and discharged. Small percentages. Really grateful for the community support that we have. Our police chief and fire chief and the Danville lifesaving crew have been fantastic over the last several months and years in support. We appreciate the work that they've done and celebration. We're working with the lifesaving crew now to try to help identify how we can lessen the burden on the emergency departments and encourage people to come when they need emergency care. But if it's not emergent care, to consider finding an alternative solution. We can help with that. So that's my report, Mayor. Council members, have to answer any questions they could. My time is yours.
Not a question, but a comment. You mentioned earlier that one thing that citizens can do is get a shot or get vaccinated. Forty nurses short. Am I correct? Forty nurses short?
Forty nurses, respiratory therapists, phlebotomists, lab techs. The numbers continue, but at least 40 nurses, yes, correct.
What can the community do? I remember I was part of a parade. What can we as a community? We talked about getting a shot. What can we do for your staff? They are doing an amazing job, and right now I see all over the country where they're overworked, they're tired. What can Danville do?
We actually had a very nice posting this week. Somebody found some popsicle sticks and put them on some signs and tried to get them into the hard ground. We haven't had enough rain well, but today helped, I think. So very kind signs. We had a lot of that last year. That's kind of dwindled off. I think recognition of that. We are having a church that's providing meals for the hospital coming up again. I think those are well received and appreciated. Little cards, thank you notes. All of those are greatly appreciated.
I know I was reading before I passed on with Dr. Miller. I've read where one nurse said simply, say thank you, simply kindness during this time. So I'm hoping everybody's listening. Dr. Miller.
Yeah, I agree. The nursing staff is really, really getting tired. And that's not just here. It's all over the country. They are beat down. You know, and it looked like the battle was won, and then another tsunami wave came in, and this one's worse than the first one. So just tell them thank you. I mean, nurses are dropping out of nursing. Some of our nursing school nurses have dropped out. They said, I just don't want to do this. I can't do this. So anytime you can thank a nurse, thank a respiratory therapist, thank a rescue squad person for what they do.
Dr. Miller, check your microphone.
It's been a terrible year. And so just encourage them. The other thing you didn't mention, next year, you've got a big capital investment.
Well, we actually have a meeting this week, Dr. Miller. You're invited to come, if you can, to unveil the final blueprints for our emergency department and renovation and expansion. That will be a monumental effort. We did have a groundbreaking earlier this year or a hammer pounding. It was kind of a fun event, and we appreciated support from the city in doing that.
Councilman Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Dr. Miller and myself, we served, as you know, on the board of the House for about 12 years or more. And personally, I've seen, when you say a one star or a half a star, and to see where we are now moving, I want to commend you and the staff for the work that you've done in the community and also the relationship building that has been implemented within the community because these are crises times, and we have lost a lot of lives. And even for me personally, I just pray that we could have more of an effective ways. And on our end, in reference to faith-based, we're doing quite a bit talking about it. But the theory is another phase that we need to get more of that mentality of people not taking that shot. And I still don't understand all of the reasons why, even with the B concert that we had a couple of weeks ago, and see thousands and thousands of people that have no mask at all. It disturbs us. So what I'm saying, there still is a gap that is missing somewhere, and I hope that we can still can move forward. But I just want to commend you and your staff, and I know the efforts and the works of the staff that you have in moving forward as being that health institution to make our community better and safer. Just want to say thank you, sir.
Councilman Buckner.
Yeah, Mr. Larson, if you could, please send all of our love and thank yous to your staff, to the nurses, to the doctors that are working hard there. My mother was there recently, and you guys did an excellent job. Your entire staff was just, I can't thank them enough for the care that they gave her while she was there. All the EMTs, the firemen, everybody that comes in and out of those doors on a daily basis, please, if you're watching, thank you from the bottom of my heart, and everybody in this council chamber, I think, would agree. We really do appreciate the hard work that you guys are doing. And the rebuilding of a reputation is something very hard to do, and I think you guys are doing an excellent job. Thank you so much.
Councilman Mayo.
And just.
Can we give him a hand real quick?
Did you give Alan that hand? Because we need to get a hand for the entire hospital staff.
Recognize for the entire. I don't take care of patients. I just help those who do.
Councilman Mayo.
Alan, you don't, but you are sure a proven leader, and we thank you for the efforts that you're doing. One question I have, what are you doing as far as, what are some of the things you're doing to recruit and push your efforts in hiring more? I know, I see that you're in need of so many, but to keep what you have as well as trying to bring in more, what are y'all?
Yeah, retention and recruitment is important. We're actually doing our own little retention effort tied to vaccination. So the hospital would like to see our vaccination percentages, our own organization, be higher. So we're doing a lot of education around some of those fears and hesitancy for vaccination. So we've done some education. We're also giving away some extra vacation time. If you've been vaccinated, we're doing a draw once a week. Probably the most valuable thing we can give our employees right now is time, a little bit of time off. So we're doing some drawings to kind of help build some resiliency. We've done a lot of ice cream and walking around with candy and water. It's all healthy candy, of course. We don't give out any bad candy at the hospital. Cardiologists wouldn't allow that.
Councilman Vogler.
Yeah, Alan, thank you for coming and giving us the update and to echo what others have said. Thank you for. Thank you for your leadership and everything that, that folks at, at the hospital have been doing. My father had a, had an overnight stay at the hospital last week and, and I don't know that anyone ever enjoys being in the hospital, but he had about as good as experience as you could have. He had nothing but nice things to say about the nurses and everyone that he interacted with. So thank you. And as you said, you know, the nurses and medical professionals, particularly those in hospitals, it's, it's been a really, really tough two years. And my wife is a nurse, so every day, you know, I, I hear it. I'm, I'm very familiar with the horror stories that quite frankly, these nurses are having to confront every day. It's, it's, it's like living, you know, life during wartime in a sense of, you know, these, these medical professionals are going into battle every day, facing this invisible enemy and, and the casualties of this. And so, you know, we, we cannot thank them enough and, and I appreciate, you know, you highlighting them again here tonight. I mean, I, I think, you know, every day we should continue. And as you said, I think early on during this last year, there were a lot of kind of everyone doing that outpouring of love and support and, and, you know, it would be great if we kind of do that again. Cause I, I mean, honestly, just seeing it up close with, in my own family, I think it's, it's harder now.
Harder now.
Absolutely. And for a number of reasons, we don't even need to get into all of them tonight, but it absolutely is. So for, for anyone watching and, and those who are here tonight, if you know anybody who, who is in that profession, please just, if nothing other than just to send them a text and say thank you, would probably go a long way. And lastly, you know, I, I, the vaccine, you know, we talk about it in just about every meeting in here encouraging folks and, and, you know, we've been fully vaccinated since I think February or maybe some even a little earlier than that or around that time. And, and I encourage everyone and, and again, you don't have to listen to me, but please speak to your doctor, speak to, to your healthcare professional and, and please, please, please consider getting vaccinated. And Alan, if there's anything I can do on my end to, to help get the word out or anything I can do to help, I'm more than happy to.
I think the support of the city is, is tremendous, helping put together through Mr. Larkin's support, the JCPenney store when we were early on and the collaboration. I think that was fantastic show of community support. So it's very clear to us that the city and its leadership is supportive of vaccination. Thank you.
Councilman Saunders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also appreciate the work that the late Dr. William Schleser had a motorcycle caravan to come in to support your staff, about 150 bikers. I was glad to be a part of that. Also our police chief was there as well. And anything we can do to encourage, you know, your staff is, is wonderful. We are in times we've never seen before and the times are very, very frightening. At the same time, leaders have to be firm and you are a leader in all candor. I'm just being honest. I was riding my motorcycle one day and I was about 20 miles from Danville and I got a call, I had the Bluetooth in my helmet, I got a call saying that my wife was in the hospital. Needless to say, I couldn't get back to Danville fast enough, but when I got back, I couldn't get in. So people can imagine how I was feeling, but you had rules. Quite frankly, at that time, it's on lockdown. No one go in, no one come out. I've had the family members, uncles, others in the hospital and emergency room, I got in to see them, but when they went to the room, I couldn't go. And I was very, very bothered and concerned about that. And then I thought about that, wait a minute, this is for your health and safety, the other patient health and safety, your family health and safety, you have to follow the rules. That's why we have, we have rules. You have a tough job. I would imagine that you have been called named that your mother didn't name you, okay? But you handled it very, very well, I think. So I just can't say enough to you how much we appreciate what you are doing for this region, for this region. It takes leadership and you're showing leadership. And for people who like I almost did, get caught up in emotions, be careful. People are watching, but never know who's watching us, who's listening to us and they don't want to hear anything negative about our city, otherwise they're not coming here. They're not coming here. We don't want to do that. I was very pleased to hear that you have about 22 new physician and so on and so forth. I think that's good. So I would encourage all the citizens and visitors to our city, if you can't say anything positive about our hospital, then for God's sake, say nothing. We need all the positivity that we can get. People are already hurting, they are afraid and all of these things, the emotions are taking over, but a leader has to look at the entire picture, not your, not just your 1,100 employees, but all your patients and their families. You have rules to go by as well, local, state and federal. So I'm just going to say to you straight up, if I ever did something that was defensive because I was emotional, I apologize. I apologize, straight up in front of the whole world. And I am so proud of you, I am so proud of that hospital and I, I thank God for you. Yeah, I said that. Thank God for you. And if there's anything that Sherman or anyone he knows can do to assist you and that hospital, I'm just seven digits away. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Dr. Miller?
Yeah, just one more comment. One of the most important things he said tonight and the reason to get the vaccine is, what if you're coming in, you didn't get the vaccine and all your buddies didn't get the vaccine and you get to the emergency room and they can't see you? You've got a fractured hip, you get diverted, you can't be seen at this hospital. This is happening around the country. It's happening in this area. Hospital emergency rooms are closing, diverting. You can't get treated in a timely fashion for your heart attack because Covid has tied up all the beds. So, you know, when you don't get that shot, you're not hurting yourself, other, you're putting yourself in danger, but you're putting a lot of other people in danger that can't get treated. If you think you couldn't be turned away, it has happened here, it has happened in Lynchburg. People get diverted for medical conditions. We can't find them beds anywhere. So get the vaccine. Thank you.
Councilman Hood?
I guess I'd like to echo on what's already been said prior, but I would also like to say we commend you and just simply to say to the entire SOVA Health of Danville, thank you all for having caring hearts. Truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Campbell?
Yes, one quick question, Alan. What is the capacity of the hospital and are you full? Where are we? How many beds are vacant or do you, basic state?
Any given day, we are full. We find ways to stretch. Our biggest concern is in the ICU because we're limited to nurses available. We're 12 nurses short in the ICU. Our emergency department, we're eight nurses short in the emergency department. So we stretch, we try to accommodate as best as we can, but we have sufficient ventilators, we have sufficient resources available, we have sufficient medications to treat patients. It's just limited on the staff that are available to help take care of them.
One of the things that I've learned in reference to being on the board, I think the, the people who use the hospital services, when it comes down for their comment or how the hospital treated you, they don't realize the importance of their marking in reference to the support of the hospital and how the government comes behind to compensate people who do not have insurance. Because sometimes with the shortage and they want more services to them, you're on a limited basis, I think you need to just briefly say how important that rating is in reference to the hospital.
It is, thank you. And, and I'm pleased you remember your days on the board.
You trained me well.
Favorably, Reverend Campbell. Yeah, so, so that score I mentioned earlier, the three or the B, part of that scoring is related to satisfaction scores that come back from our patients. We only get to count patients who score as a nine or a 10. If you're below that, we don't count and we have to have a certain percentage of those. We have to be above the 80th percentile at nine or 10 in order to be eligible to move into a four star or a five star. So it's connected. Thank you for that recommendation.
I'm glad we spent time on two topics tonight, National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week and this is so important. Young people, since the Danville Public Schools came before you, you talked about the number of persons that's in the hospital, any young people in the hospital?
Thankfully, we've not had to admit any pediatric patients so far. There's a few that have had to be transferred to pediatric hospitals, Duke or, or others, but so far the younger children are more resilient, but it is affecting them and we are seeing a lot of patients come in.
Well, again, to the entire staff, I've, I've heard each time I watched you tonight, when the accolades was being thrown at you, you would duck and you wanted those accolades to go to the entire team of SOVA. And so we, we're going to give it to them. If you heard from this council already, several council members have wives who are nurses, my daughter and family and friends who are nurses and not only that, but the persons who even sweeping the floors and scrubbing the floors. And we talk about when we gave the accolades, that was to the entire hospital staff, the entire team. So I want to make sure we clarify that. That's the entire team, whether you pushing a mop or sweeping the floor, no matter, working in the cafeteria, this is, we sincerely, as the leaders of Danville, we appreciate all that you're doing. I wish we could do more, but I just want to say thank you so much and your report was excellent.
Mayor, can I answer your question about kids?
Sure.
I talked with my, my daughter-in-law's a neonatologist on the staff at UVA. They are overwhelmed with children with Covid. They're overwhelmed with pregnant mothers who have Covid or are carrying children. You know, it's, it's hitting the young people hard, the younger, the younger kids. So they don't have enough beds at UVA, a major tertiary referral center to take care of the Covid patients. She was having to, when they called her for a bed, she didn't have them. She was having to call other hospitals all over the state to try to find bed for children.
Question came, Dr. Miller, today, it came, actually someone called me today and asked, and I'm glad you brought that up. Is there anywhere in Danville that young people can get a Covid shot? Can you answer that?
Yeah, if, to 12, I mean, you can get a Covid shot.
So give that, take it.
If they have to have parental permission.
Yeah, exactly. So what's the age limit?
Right now it's 12.
So 12, if they have parental consent, I want to make sure the parents understand this.
12 to 18 and after 18, you can get your shot without parental consent.
So from 12 to 18, here in Danville, 12 to 17, here in Danville, with parental consent, they can get the, get a shot? That's what they need to know. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Miller, for that. Constitution Week, will Ms. Dawn Davis please come forward? Good evening to you.
Good evening. Whereas today, September 21st, 2021 marks as the 234th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable, memorable anniversary to the patriotic celebrations which is commemorate the occasions. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, Alonzo Jones, Mayor of the City of Danville, along with City Council, hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2021 as Constitution Week in the City of Danville and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardians of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, given under my hand this 21st day of September 2021. Please feel free to give some comments and the city manager will give you a proclamation. Please feel free to give some comments.
Then speak directly into the microphone, please.
I will. The Dorothea Henry chapter of the DAR was actually founded March 4th, 1894. It is one of the oldest chapters in the nation. As I've been reading about the casino and the fact that here in Danville, they're tying it to our history. I'm a former teacher. I did my student teaching at Forest Hills, graduate of Danville schools and I, the Constitution is very important and we want everyone learning about it, but the greatest thing has been the support from the schools. Galileo, GW, Tunstall and Dan River have some of the very best students. The Good Citizenship Contest that we've had, they are fantastic. This past year, we only had one point difference between the students who won. So I want our history to be a part of our future and the Constitution is freedom and equality for us all and that's what's so important to remember our history too.
Thank you so much and thank you for that good news about our students and thank you for all that you're doing. So name those schools again, so we can hear all the, those schools again, please. We hear all kinds of stuff, but we want to hear this, name those schools again.
We have Galileo and GW from the city, Dan River and Tunstall for the Dorothea Henry. Actually, this past year for the Lynchburg District, the student from Gretna is the one who won for our entire district. So we have excellent students, we have a fantastic history, goes back so far and we just need to appreciate it and celebrate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Well said. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here tonight. Virginia Cooperative Extension, introduction of Daniel Hale. Please, good evening to you all. This is Daniel Hale, Extension Agent 4H Youth Development, introduction of the new City of Danville Extension Agent. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I hope you all are well. Thank you for having us out and giving us some of this time. My name is Daniel Hale. I'm the 4H Extension Agent in the City of Danville. I'm also the unit coordinator for the Danville City Office and I'm very excited to share tonight that we have filled our Horticulture Extension Agent position. That was left vacant by Stuart Sutphen when he retired and we know that was a big loss to the city. We lost a lot of knowledge and a lot of skill when Stuart left, but I'm happy to share that we have hired Corey Riedel and I'd like to invite him to just share a little bit about himself to you all.
Mr. Riedel, welcome to the council tonight. Good evening, welcome to Danville.
Thanks, Mayor Jones. Thank you, City Council, for having me. I'll just keep this brief, I, I got my master, or my bachelor's degree from Virginia Tech in Horticulture. My master's degree, I'm finishing up now in Entomology. I was a military veteran, I was in the army for eight years. My role here that I see it is provide the city, public works and the residents in any kind of horticultural and agricultural assistance that they need. Please feel free to call our office if you need assistance with anything, whether it's your lawn or garden or trees, that's what I'm here for. Some programming that I'd like to do in the future would be to find ways to increase food production in the city and urban farming, put out some more community gardens in the, in the city so people can grow their own food and have access to healthy food that they can grow on their own and learn more about where food comes from. And also just creating demonstration gardens across the city where I plant some plants and give people a good idea of what will grow well here and how, how to do it. And on top of that, I would also like to do some educational programming with the youth and with the senior citizens in Danville and hopefully you'll see more of that from me in the future. I've been here for two months, so I'm just starting and thanks for the welcome.
Do you have any contact information that you're able to give at this time or maybe later, at a later date can come back? You have any contact information you can give?
Contact information, I can give you the office phone number. It's 434-799-6558.
Again, welcome to our community. Give that number one more time, just in case someone was getting a pin. Again, welcome to the community and thank you so much for being here tonight. Thank you both. Thank you both. Thank you so much. Under communications from visitors, anyone who would like to desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda at this time may come forward. Once again, anyone who would like to speak on any item, I think Mr. Lewis, did you want to come and speak on an item that's not on the agenda? I know he's the co-chair, he's probably thinking about that 1% tax. Good evening, sir.
Yes, good evening. I, I certainly appreciate this opportunity, you know, but I think most of you know that Carl Starver and I co-chair the Vote Yes for DPS campaign and I just want to thank the City Council for your support. Appreciate you all putting it out there. I can't stress it enough for our public. This, you know, I'm always that time believing. can't stress it enough for our public. This, you know, I'm always that time believing, taking advantage of those opportunities. This is an opportunity for our education. I certainly appreciate our mayor and council being out front. Education is number one right now. This is a major, huge step for us to take right now of getting this passed. And I would just educate everybody a little bit. We got to vote twice because we are voting for the 1% sales tax, and we're voting that we can get the money immediately. So, it's voting twice, you know, and I just hope, I mean, I voted on that first day, and I just went down and kind of see how things were going, and I could tell that, um, you know, how the ballot is set up. People, please do not forget to turn that ballot over once they, once they vote, uh, because it can be a little tricky a little bit, but we want to make sure that we, we, everybody do what you can to get this thing passed. And we have a wonderful committee that is doing a lot of things, putting yard signs out. We on Facebook. Uh, we want people to share that, that news. Please share it and, uh, with your, with your contacts, and we really need that support.
Well, early voting has started. Mr. Lewis is absolutely correct. When I voted, you do need to flip it over, flip over the ballot, and you'll see that, because early voting started last Friday. Anything else you want to add?
That'll be it for me. So, anybody want, if I, any groups, you know, we've, Dr. Harrison been speaking, speaking to all kinds of groups, and when she can't make it, I'll be there. So, if any groups out there that need of us to come to speak to, we are certainly welcome. You're welcome to do that. So, go to V, uh, votefordps.com, and you can get ahold of us, and we'll be glad to go and speak to any organization that we can.
While you're here, we're going to invite Kenny Jr. to come and join you. We just want to thank him. Kenny, if you don't mind, join your father. Last couple of weeks ago, Kenny's been working hard in our city, and one of the things that Kenny Senior and his wife shared with me about you, Kenny Jr., you had this vision of the ribbon, ribs and Jazz Fest, and I think your mom was sharing with me, your dad said, if you want to make it happen, you need to make it happen. We just want to commend you for doing a superb job. I was there. Thank you for all the work that you put into it. Our staff is working with our staff. So, we just want to thank you so much. Anything you want to add in regards to that?
Uh, yes, definitely. I do appreciate, uh, Mayor Jones giving me some time in the room. Um, yes, the Rivers Rhythm Blues Jazz Festival is something that I want to bring back to my city. Um, I call it my city because I feel all of the patrons of Danville should consider Danville their city. Uh, if there's something that you guys want to, uh, bring here, want to see Danville grow, you know, let's be a part of it. But, um, this year, um, it was a good year for us. Um, had a lot of good planning, um, a lot of good artists, a lot of people from in the city and with outside of the city came, uh, to support the event. Um, I do want to thank you, yourself, your staff, the City Council, also, uh, Mr. City Manager, on working with us, um, in some things that I might have overlooked, and working with us to make sure we still had the event and got it done. So, uh, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. It's a great job, great turnout. City staff, Kenny, let your staff know he's done a superb job, but thank you for, um, bringing it home. Thank you so much. Councilman Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make an awareness. It's good to see father and son working together in the community, and it's just priceless, and I hope that the community can see that the quality of life in our city is family. We don't want to lose that. We want to enhance that, and to see your son could have gone to many different places, but come back to Danville, his home, and to move forward. I just want to commend that.
Anyone else? Well, thank you both. Thank you so much. We're sitting in communications. Anyone else would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone else who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Under Consent Agenda, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's on the consent agenda at this time may come forward. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's on the consent agenda may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items B through E.
Second by Councilman Campbell. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Under New Business Review of our General Fund Financial Results, Michael, good evening to you all, and welcome, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, City Council, I believe in your agenda packet for this evening. You have the General Fund results through the end of August. Uh, this does represent two months of our new fiscal year complete, or roughly just under 17%. Uh, so to give some brief comments, uh, the revenues received through August are 12.7 million. Uh, this is about 40,000, more than last year. Um, I will point out that some of our state aid was late coming. Uh, we receive about 700,000 every quarter for law enforcement support. Uh, that was actually received in September. Usually, it's received in August. So, if that had been received in August, we would have about 750,000 more for the first two months of this fiscal year compared to last year. Now, those increases are pretty much located in two areas. Uh, the first being property taxes. Uh, we're between tax billing cycles right now, so mainly, we're collecting delinquent taxes, and our delinquent real estate taxes are about 100,000 over last year at this point, and already at 33% of our budget. So, we're off to a good start there. Uh, the other area is local taxes. Uh, to touch on this, uh, sales tax, as, as we've mentioned in many months in the past, continues to perform strong. Uh, we're averaging about 900,000 per month. Uh, this is bringing us up to about 1.8 million at the end of August, or 17.5% of our budget. Uh, just for your information, uh, prior to taxes being collected, uh, online, for online sales, we were receiving more like 700 to 750,000 a month. Uh, so, we're looking at about 150 to 200,000 more per month in sales tax. Mills tax, uh, we're averaging about 800,000 a month. Now, pre-COVID, uh, that amount was about 700,000 per month. So, currently, we're receiving about 100,000 extra per month in mills tax. Uh, at the end of August, we're at 1.6 million or 19% of our budget. And then, lastly, our lodging tax, uh, we used to, we are averaging about 170,000 a month. Uh, so, right now, we're at 350,000, and that's a little over 23% of our budget. And again, I'm comparing that to, we're 17% of, of, uh, through the year. So, we're running a heavy budget there. All of our other revenues, our state and federal assistance are on track with expectations at this time. Under the expenditures, uh, we were just under 21 million through the end of August. That's just a slight increase of 71,000 over last year. Uh, so, we're nearly flat when compared with last year. Our departmental spending is at 15% of budget, so we're running about 2% behind, uh, the 17% mark, and that's kind of what we expect as we go through the year. Uh, so, in summary, fiscal '22 is off to a strong start, in my opinion. Uh, just for an update on fiscal '21, last month, when I was here with you, I reported that we anticipated an increase to our unreserved fund balance of about 725,000. At that time, we were using estimates, you know, for our final month of sales tax, mills tax, and lodging, as we received those on a lag basis. Uh, so, now that we've received those, all three of those came in ahead of what we expected. Uh, so, now it looks like we'll be adding about, uh, just, just over a million dollars to our unassigned fund balance for fiscal '21. So, that will bring us, uh, from 33 million to 34 million. In, in comparison to our policy, we, we require 20% of our revenues. Uh, that's 23 million is our, our bare minimum requirement. So, we're roughly 10 to 11 million over that for the end of fiscal '21. Our audit is undergoing now. Uh, we expect them to complete, uh, the, the external audit of our financials sometime in November. Uh, so, we have tentatively scheduled Brown Edwards, uh, the audit firm, to be with us on December the 7th, uh, to present the, the audited statements. So, that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
So, I try to make it more feasible so that listening audience can understand it. In our rainy day fund, 34 million dollars.
That's correct.
Great job. Lee.
The mayor stole the first thing. I was going to get you to repeat again, but, uh, 30, and 34 million in our reserve, and, and we require 20%, which you said would be, what, 23 million, and we've got 34 million in there right now. Um, and you, you said this before, too, but to come back around, to sum up everything that you just went through, I, so it's safe to say that the financial state of our city is strong?
It is.
Thank you.
Michael, um, we were talking about the 1% tax for the schools. Any comments on that?
Um, just to follow up with our fund balance policy, um, obviously, um, if that passes, uh, we will be hopefully able to issue, uh, those bonds to do school improvements. It's a large number. Um, one of the strategies to offset that, uh, would be to enhance our fund balance policy. Um, so, while we're very strong right now, um, to offset the, the additional borrowing, we would probably want to look at raising the fund balance policy, which we can easily do based on, uh, the amount that we have in reserves. Um, so, that's just a, a sort of a key component to, to that, that we really haven't talked about, but.
Can you briefly give a little, um, Mr. Lewis, Dr. Harrison, everyone has been talking about the bond. Can you give a little bit to the public why it's so important to vote yes on that bond part, please?
Well, that enables us to, uh, as has been mentioned in the past, uh, able to access those funds immediately. Um, all, if it's 140 million, whatever that number ends, ends up being based on the current interest rate at the time, uh, it enables us to get, uh, that money in process at that time, so we can accomplish many capital improvements all at once. Um, if it does not pass, then we're, we'll be limited to pay as you go, which means we'll have to, um, accumulate a year's worth of that 1% sales tax and then appropriate it for spending. And so, it'll be a much longer process, uh, and also in an environment where construction costs are increasing, it would end up costing more in the long run, uh, in much longer time period to get those things accomplished, so.
Wait, anyone else? Dr. Miller?
Well, I just want to piggyback on that. Uh, when we originally looked at, uh, redoing and upfitting, uh, schools, uh, five years ago, the cost was 126 million. Now, it's close to 200 million, 196 million. Uh, so, the longer we wait to finance these projects, the more we're going to end up paying over the long run, much more.
Also, interest rates are at an all-time low for borrowing, so it's a good time to do so.
It's a good time. Great stuff. Thank you so much. Good job. Thank you so much. Under Item B, consideration of amendment to the grant agreement with the River District Development and approval of lease agreements. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Vogler?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution approving and authorizing a third amendment to the grant agreement by and among the City of Danville, Virginia, River District Development LLC and the Industrial Development Authority of Danville, Virginia.
Second by Councilman Mayo. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Number two, Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a resolution approving and authorizing a real estate purchase option agreement for Acre's Warehouse at 317 and 319 Craghead Street, binding between the Industrial Development Authority of Danville, Virginia, and the River District Development LLC, with the City of Danville, Virginia, joining in said agreement to evidence its consent and agreement to certain rights and obligations of the real estate purchase option agreement, including the form of lease agreement with the city attached Heathrow.
Second by Councilman Mayo. Discussion of the motion. Councilman Saunders.
Mayor, just to add that the representatives are here from the River District Development LLC, and my compliments to them and to our city manager for bringing this to us and working this out, and I think that's just great. Again, another example of the private sector investing in our downtown.
Could you all please stand? Thank you all. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, propose a resolution approving and authorizing a lease agreement binding between the Industrial Development Authority of Danville, Virginia, and the River District Development LLC, with the City of Danville, Virginia, joining in said lease to evidence its consent and agreement to certain rights and obligations of the lease agreement.
Second by Councilman Mayo. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you will call a roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Uh, uh, just to comment on that, uh, yeah, uh, this is an area long neglected, uh, no sidewalks, lighting's poor. It's, it's been a very dangerous, uh, for the citizens there that, uh, there, and I drive that way not uncommonly, and it's just, I'm always afraid I'm going to hit somebody or hit, before I even see them. Uh, so, this is a drastic improvement, long needed. And Resolution Number Two, for the City Council, the City of Danville, Virginia, endorsing construction of pedestrian improvements at Ponty Forest Road and Arnett Boulevard.
Second by Councilman Mayo. Discussion of the motion. Councilman Vogler.
Um, yeah, just real quickly, and, and several of these projects, or all these projects we've mentioned tonight are important, but as it pertains to Ponty Forest Road and, and this one, uh, what we're talking about here, um, we, we've been, I serve as the, the chairman of Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is involved in the, um, traffic studies and, and transportation and all that far region, and so Ponty Forest has been something that, uh, the committee has been working on, uh, with citizens for the last year or so, and you're going to, folks are going to hear a lot of improvements over the next couple of years coming to Ponty Forest and traffic and pedestrian safety and a number of things, and that'll be coming to council along the way as they continue to work through the process. But, uh, got a lot of great feedback from citizens, and I think they're going to have even more opportunities, uh, in the months ahead to continue to get feedback, uh, from our citizens on how to improve traffic safety and pedestrian safety, uh, on Ponty Forest Road, but, but certainly, this is a, a part of it tonight, and, and look forward to more of that, uh, in the days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, propose a resolution approving and authorizing a lease agreement binding between the Industrial Development Authority of Danville, Virginia, and the River District Development LLC, with the City of Danville, Virginia, joining in said lease to evidence its consent and agreement to certain rights and obligations of the lease agreement.
Second by Councilman Mayo. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you will call a roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
This was brought to my attention last year by a group, by a church, actually, Union Church, reached out to me about this, and it's just great to see the city and the local people and churches working together to make things happen for our citizens. Again, thank you to the city staff and thank you to the Union Church for pointing this out to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
And item F, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation ordinance for the DMV Highway Safety Selective Enforcement Alcohol Grant Program in the amount of $18,570. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenue from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles Highway Safety Selective Enforcement Alcohol Grant Program in the amount of $18,570 and appropriating the same first reading.
Second by Councilman Mayo, under item G, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation ordinance for Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles Highway Safety Office Enforcement Speed Grant Program. Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenue from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicle Highway Safety Office Selective Enforcement Speed Grant Program in the amount of $9,100 and appropriating the same first reading.
Second by Councilman Mayo, under item A, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation ordinance for Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles Occupant Protection Grant. Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenue from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicle Highway Safety Office Selective Enforcement Occupant Protection Program in the amount of $5,250 and appropriating the same first reading.
Second by Councilman Mayo, under item I, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation ordinance for older American Act grant funds. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing certain revenues to provide for Title III-B grant funds and local share for senior citizens' transportation services and appropriating the same first reading.
Second by Councilman Buckner, under item J, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation ordinance for grant funds from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. Councilman Campbell.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adopting an ordinance amending fiscal year 2022 budget and appropriation ordinance to provide for a grant from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management in the amount of $202,200 and a local share of amount of $37,800 for equipment upgrades to the emergency management shelter for a total appropriation in the amount of $140,000 and appropriating the same.
Second by Councilman Buckner, first reading. Communication, want to pause and say to city manager, I just want to say thank you all, I don't know if you all saw today, State of the Region, he spoke on everything from economics to safe, public safety to education, just want to say, well done.
Thank you very much, and also well done to you as well. I wanted to take an opportunity just to point out that on the agenda, I think it was item C and D recently adopted, all four of those transportation projects were items that were brought to city council by citizens or perhaps to the staff by city council members. Councilman Buckner mentioned one of them, but all four of them were generated basically from a citizen concern of some sort, and while it takes many months for it to get to the point where city council can adopt them and get moved forward with these projects, I think it's important to note that that's how these particular things came forward, and also to educate the public in the fact that these were brought to us many months ago, so it takes some time to study these particular issues, to get the funding in place, sometimes we can get state funding, sometimes it requires city funding, and you know, just because a project is brought to us doesn't mean we can immediately start doing whatever it is that is being requested first, you know, we want to make sure that it's in line with the MUTCD guidelines, which you can look that up, I think it's a Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, I like saying that, so that's why I keep saying that, but you have to make sure that everything is in compliance of that, that takes some time, going through the MPO takes some time, getting some state funding takes some time, and then putting it in the city budget takes some time, but eventually it gets to the point where it comes to city council and you can adopt something that will move these projects forward, so we appreciate the citizens when they tell us about things, but please be patient with us when we look at them and make sure that they're appropriate and they actually will help the traffic flow in the city. And just on a related note, if you drive down the Highway 86 or South Main Street from North Carolina through toward town, you'll notice that there's some work being done at the Dollar General, the intersection of Updike and South Main, I know that was a big concern probably about a year, year and a half ago, city council put money in the budget to fund the improvement, you know, we of course studied it, followed the MUTCD guidelines, made sure that was, it warranted a traffic signal, it did warrant a traffic signal, the city council budgeted the funds for it, and now construction is underway, we're waiting on some of the mast arms to come in, but we anticipate in the first quarter next year that those, that traffic intersection signalization project will be done, so, thank you.
Councilman Campbell. Mayor, can I ask? Sure. City manager, in reference to Pine Forest Road and?
Arnett.
Yes, and they've been asking for a red light for the longest time, is this in the plan for the future or not?
I think we've studied that in the past, and it does not meet the warrants for a traffic signal, so that's part of the process that we, you know, will constantly look at it.
Even a cautious light?
There are various things that we can do that we can look at to see if there's some different improvements that can be made, but this is handling a little bit of that, but we, again, we want to be very consistent with the way we put in traffic control devices because if you don't do it the right way, then you can create more problems than you solve, so that's part of what we're doing, but we certainly will keep looking at that.
If I could, just to piggyback off of that too, what Ken just said is incredibly important because I think, you know, part of the issues that we have on Pine Forest now is really that it's been a hodgepodge of things over decades that have kind of just little thing here, little thing there, and it's kind of gotten it to the point that it is now, so that's why they're really taking their time to try to do a holistic approach to figure out what the best methods are for the entire corridor and be consistent with it, but that's all in motion, and they're getting a lot of great feedback, and I know they will, but as Ken mentioned, it takes a little bit of time, that's something I've had to learn in my time on council, is things don't always happen quite as quickly as we want, but, you know, just as you mentioned, that traffic light over there on 86 was something that I know Dr. Miller and others talked very strongly about, and now it's happening, so, you know, it's important, we do listen, I want folks to know that, you know, just because it doesn't happen the next week doesn't mean that we're not trying to respond.
Takes a process and it takes some time, a lot goes into it, ordering the mast arms is, you know, incredibly long lead time just for the intersection.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you again. Deputy city manager?
No.
Thank you, sir. City attorney?
No.
Thank you, sir. City clerk?
No.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Nothing tonight, thank you. I just briefly want to say I really do appreciate our city manager and deputy city manager and all the city workers that have been working so faithfully, and also the council and the mayor in reference to Caesar Entertainment coming to Danville, and very briefly, I pray my comments now are very much in order, that as prosperity is in Danville and major prosperity that is coming, I pray to God that one thing I would never hope to see happen in Danville is that we lose our character and lose what make Danville so special. We have citizens here in Danville who give a lot, and with the glitter or glamour of what is happening and what will happen, I pray to God we never lose the quality of life, we never let glitter take us away from who we really are, and we're special people, and lastly, that prosperity is shared in all areas of the community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh yes, I would like to commend our Honorable Mayor Jones and Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisor Chairman Bob Warren, along with our city manager Ken Larkin and Pennsylvania County Administrator David Smithman, for an outstanding panel discussion of the State of the Region hosted virtually by the Danville, Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce. If I could do a quote that the mayor said this morning, he said, "We remain in unprecedented times with COVID-19, but since our State of Region address a year ago, we have made great strides. We still have work to do, and that is exactly what we are doing, working for a better future." Appreciate you for that.
Thank you. Just piggybacking off what we heard earlier today with having Allen and Dr. Harrison here from the schools, what we have with the COVID is definitely something that has to be addressed each and every time. We look on the TV and I see how nurses and how RNs and LPNs are being so overworked, and now you see how it's mainstreaming to the fact that they don't want to do this anymore because of the profession and all of the time that is spent trying to help and hear and cure people, as well as looking at them, when they're looking at them to say, "It's nothing more I can do," and that takes a toll on so many, and I can imagine, we see this throughout our community, we see it throughout the nation, and now we're looking at it now, and I always listen to Dr. Miller give us advice and as well as giving us updates, how it's affecting our kids now. If I can, and we stress this each and every time at council meetings, through the citizens of Danville and through our surrounding areas, please get the vaccination, it will only help. This thing has been around long enough, and it's, becoming with another virus is bringing it on even stronger, so the way of it is we have to get vaccinated. Think about it, think about your family, think about your children, think about your community, and we can build a better nation and a better world as well, as a better Danville if we do that, so I just wanted to commend them for coming out and giving their report and letting us know what we have to do to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, shout out to Tommy Bennett at the NAACP, he's already talking, a vaccine clinic coming up soon, so please get your vaccine. I mean, how would you feel, you know, do it for your children, do it for your family, I mean, how would you feel if your brother or your mother or dad couldn't get treated for their heart attack and died because there were so many COVID patients, and they couldn't get into the hospital? I mean, it's affecting everyone, so do it for other people, if you don't want to do it for yourself, get the vaccine yourself to help other people. The, oh, shout out to Barry Mayo, I understand he got married recently. Yeah. And Chris Daniel died recently, not of COVID, but Chris had been sick for some time. He went to Hampton Sydney, he was a teacher and educator, not only in the classroom, but I understand he taught underprivileged children, African Americans to read, other people underprivileged to read on his own. He was a voter advocate, and I think it was telling what was said in his obituary in the paper, it said, "In lieu of donations, donate blood, vote, and get your vaccination." That says it all about Chris. And finally, the American Heart Association Walk is this week, Anglers Park, come around 9:00 to 9:30, sign up, and let's walk for the hearts, the people, the research, again, 32% of the people that get admitted with COVID have heart damage, one out of every three, so there's millions of dollars of research going into COVID's effect on the heart and the rest of the body, and the cardiology literature, I didn't think I'd ever become an expert on infectious disease, but I practically have, all the cardiology literature, 90% of it's about COVID and effects on the heart right now, so it damages your heart, so the best way to keep that from happening, don't get it in the first place, get your vaccine. Don't get COVID, once you get it, even if you're not hospitalized, it can damage your heart, they've done scans on people who were not hospitalized and show heart damage, they just had, what, a mild to moderate attack, so best way to avoid that, get the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I have been coming here for a few years now, and I noticed something that for me is a first, I realize that you are an Army veteran.
Sir.
Can you help us understand why the city clock is military time?
It probably had something to do with the mayor.
All right, Mr. Mayor, that's fine. You deserve it, sir. Again, I'd like to ask all of our citizens to please support our healthcare workers. Any concerns that you may have, please let the hospital staff know, just let the people know that can address your concern. People who can't do anything, don't waste your time blowing off the steam unless you're talking to a family member or a very, very close friend. I share with all of you privately my experience, and I thought about that, my wife in the hospital, my uncle, my others, and then I thought about, and I looked at the staff, the nurses and everyone in the hospital, and I'm like, wow, they're having tough times and working long hours and some people losing their jobs, and we've heard about the, I hate to use the word demise, how some people all over the world, and these are some very, very unusual times, so I hope that we will think twice before we start running our people down and start doing things that's going to hurt the cause. So if you have any concerns at all, please talk to people who can address your concerns and not anyone else just to gossip, please don't do that. And finally, I concur with Mr. Vice Mayor about Chris Daniels, good man, good man, and he will be missed, will be missed. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, as was mentioned earlier, a little over a week ago, there was the RIBS, Rhythm and Blues Festival, I know the mayor was there and maybe some other council members as well, this was the first year they've done it that I wasn't able to attend, and the reason for that was Councilman Buckner and I were a few miles up the road at the other large event that was happening in our region, and there to represent the city and got to speak with folks and kind of see what was going on out there, and Councilman Buckner and I got to meet Ice T and talk to him about maybe filming his next TV show down here, so we'll see if that pans out, but I did just want to share because I think this is important because it speaks to, as I think Councilman Campbell mentioned earlier, about who we are as people in Danville and the types of people that our citizens are. I have received over the last week or so, literally hundreds and hundreds of comments and messages and threads and all kinds of things from people from all over the country who were here in the last couple of weeks, and I just wanted to read a couple of the messages, and again, I could go on all night with just reading these, but I wanted to share just a couple because it speaks to who our citizens are. We were able to eat at two amazing local restaurants, and the stores were fully stocked for us to get ready for the festival. Thank you for having us, and we will be back." Here's another one that says, "Thank you for welcoming us to your city from out of state. We have, you have some really amazing, kind, genuinely great people in Danville. We love the festival and all of you. We will always make this trip from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania for the festival. We look forward to coming back to your great city." I've had, again, so many of those people who just could not say enough nice things about how they were treated by people, our hotels, you know, were full, our restaurants. So, you know, we have amazing people in Danville, and I just want to give thanks to each and every citizen and how they, they responded to a lot of outside people and all that. And then this is something that, that will continue in the years ahead, and hopefully when we're in more normal times and non-COVID times, and we can really kind of celebrate these things. But, you know, we had a lot of people from outside our area come in, and the feedback that they have been giving has been overwhelmingly positive, speaking to the kindness of our citizens. Lastly, I want to speak just a few minutes about a particular council member, but I'll preface that by saying, first of all, I want to thank each and every member of council and the mayor for the work that you guys put in. And I know that the time and dedication and time away from your families and, and all these things, and each member of council contributes to this city in a positive way and in different ways. But I wanted just to take a couple minutes to, to thank my colleague, Councilman Buckner, because he doesn't like doing, he doesn't like talking about the things that he does and the things he's involved with and the great work that he does. But y'all know I don't mind running my mouth, so I just want to take a couple minutes and, and, and give him his flowers, as we say, because he does a lot of great things for this city. You know, if you are one of the thousands of people who has enjoyed the food truck rodeo over the last few years, you should thank James Buckner because he's the reason it's here. If you're someone who has enjoyed the public pianos that have been in our city for the last few years, you should thank James Buckner because he took his own time and his own money to, to make sure that they were out there. If you're someone who enjoys seeing the American flags that line Memorial Drive, what we call Patriot Way, you should thank James Buckner because he was the leading voice on City Council that made that happen. I could go on and on and on and on. And so I say that because, just because you don't see a news story about it or you don't read about it on social media or something, doesn't mean that there's not work being done and things happening from council members, and that's the case for a number of council members. But I wanted to just give him a shout out in particular tonight and say, James Buckner is a darn good city councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you darn good city council.
Thank you for the kind words, gentlemen. He paid leaders to take.
Madam, Madam Clerk. Tonight, we heard a lot of great comments. I mean, it was, I don't recall having this many announcements and special recognitions. We talked, we heard about hunger and crop walk and the National Adult Education and Family, Family Literacy Week and Constitution Week, and Allen presented what he, and we met the new young man from Extension Agent 4H. Corey, if I'm sure you all have heard, but one of our own, Corey, would you please stand? Corey has been recognized as one of the 500 powerful, powerless award winners in economic development. Congratulations to you. I'm just going to make it short. Sherman, Sherman said something tonight that had me in a zone, and I haven't been able to shake it since he said it. You heard about the hospital nurses. I see Robbie Woodall is here. I see Dr. Harrison is here. I see a bunch of our persons from the airport, Public Works, finance, our finance persons and our council members, city manager. And Sherman, you said something to Allen Larson that has stuck with me, and it's probably going to stick with me the rest of this week. And you told Allen, you said you would probably call names that even your mother didn't even name you. And I guarantee you, these leaders that I just pointed out, and even though I just celebrated Corey, I guarantee you, every one of these leaders could say to themselves, including council members, our attorney, is it worth it? When Ken was doing the State of the Region today, and we were at the State of the Region, and Brian, thank you so much, and I was in the other room, Bob said something to me, and Lee, you mentioned it. And we were talking about the festival, and the young man is ready to throw up his hands, the young man that CEO of the festival. And Bob said he was there to encourage him. A lot of times, people ask me all the time, why do you give so many accolades and so many encouragement, so much encouragement? Someone told me, someone very dear to me told me this morning, early about 6:30 this morning, when you wake up, you're trying to change lives. You wake up to wanting to make a difference in someone's life. I got on the elevator, I won't call the council member out, but I would say to Lee, thank you. When a council member got on the elevator, he said it hasn't been such a good day. And how many of us have those days? But we're still moving this city forward. I guarantee you, if you asked Dr. Harrison, how is her day going? When I pull up at the fair, she was just smiling, but behind that smile is a lot of work. If you ask Robbie Woodall, if you ask our financial director who just gave that report about the great budget, if you ask our city manager, deputy city manager. And then Sherman, you said something. You said, "Try to be nice. Try." Everyone in this room and everyone is watching and everyone is viewing, we're not going to do everything the right way. Ken stated just a few minutes ago, he said, "When we get these requests from our citizens and we want them, it doesn't mean it's going to happen right away." So then we get to call those names, Sherman, that our mother didn't name us. So I'll just say to all of you here, be encouraged. It's not easy. That's why I got that military clock right there. Be encouraged. And I can tell you, as the mayor and one of the leaders of this city, it has not been easy. But when you got persons who will text you on a Saturday, and Councilman Saunders sent that message and said, "How are you doing?" I wanted to tell him, "I'm down here eating some food I never ate before, but I'm doing well." When you got council members reaching out to each other, when Brian Hood sends a message to Barry and I, and he said, "There's no, no reason that I'm texting. I just want to say, love you guys." If we can do more of that, "Brother, I know you had a rough day today, but I love you guys." Lee, I thank you for doing that for him. Dr. Harrison, schoolboy, keep doing what you're doing. Robbie, everybody, just keep doing what you're doing. And Sherman, thank you so much for that because one of the things about is we keep building, we keep building, we keep building, we keep growing, we keep growing, but we got to pause. And we got to tell people, thank you for what you're doing. Because people are taken on top of COVID and everything else. People are taken all kinds of abuse and hits trying to do the right thing. So be encouraged. And last, I would say this, it was mentioned that a young man got married, but his name is now Bruno Mars. And I want to publicly apologize to you, Barry Mayo, because when you all went to